I don't know what about us.
Hi.
What's up? We'll find out tonight. You think it's commercial?
building, to a meeting that I hope will be informative and will be the start of the communication process. This is not the only meeting we're going to be having as we gear up from the kickoff of the wastewater system. But we wanted to at least start getting some information out. If you've not heard it at this point, get any information out, see the latest we have, and then we'll take it from there. What I want to do is I would have you guys sign in if you can. Give me your address and your name and a phone number off to the side. Let me take that copy. And just if you can circulate this around the room, please, so we've got an idea of who else here and we can, and then we can kind of create a little bit of a communication chain, so we can allow it to grow and go. As I mentioned, tonight is really an informational meeting for the sole purpose of trying to get folks thinking about where we're headed. As you know, over the last few months, we've been in the middle of constructing a wastewater system that's going to eventually serve you and other properties in this community. And it's still a few months off from coming online, but I know from a planning standpoint, it's important that you start getting some numbers together, start thinking through the process, and try to get an idea of what all's involved. My name is Don Ferguson, and I'm the city manager. And we've got a couple of Aldermen here tonight. I think the mayor's on his way. He shouldn't be here in just a few minutes, but we've got Alderman McDougal and also Alderman Coggan who are with us tonight. You can raise your hand, so everybody sees they're here. Right, and they're here tonight. As I mentioned, the mayor will be here, and I think it's possible you'll see maybe another member or two show up. So let's dive into this, because I promised to try to keep this at about an hour, so it won't get in the way of your night. First of all, let me give you an update on where we stand on the construction. The collection system is pretty much in. They're in the process of tying in some electrical right now at the two lift station sites, and they've got some fencing to put up, but for all practical purposes, the collection system is about 99.99% in. So they're done from that standpoint. They actually finished ahead of schedule as far as that situation goes. The treatment plant is running right now. It was scheduled to be complete in January, and right now with some weather delays they've encountered, because they have some issues that are extremely weather sensitive in the way of painting and things along those lines for tanks and other issues out there, they're running just a few weeks behind. And so we think the treatment plant at this stage of the game is going to be done probably the end of January, if not right at the beginning of February. So they're moving fast on that. For those of you who are not familiar, this may be repetitive for some of you, and I apologize, but I see some faces of some folks who I've not had the chance to visit with. The treatment plant is located way up on Royal Street, on the property that was donated about a hanks to the village in the development agreement related to sanctuary. And that five-acre-plus site is sitting back tucked in the woods, and we have a treatment plant that's going to have the capacity, the eventual capacity, of 300,000 gallons up there. Right now, it's a 200,000 gallon facility. And what will happen is the waste will be gathered, it'll be pushed through the collection system, it'll be pushed through a series of lift stations that will take that waste literally up Royal Street all the way onto that property where it'll go into the plant and be treated. So it's a rather significant piece of infrastructure that's under construction up there, and they're making good progress. They're probably at about 90 to 92% as far as the completion point. Right now, the project cost is looking good. We are running right now on, if not under budget, for the total project cost. So that's encouraging, and that's very unusual, quite frankly. But we have two really good contractors that are working to beat all their goals in this situation. I think they're making progress. The profile of the customers, you're probably fitting into this picture. The initial service area, for those of you who may not be familiar, the initial service area includes properties along Main Street, and that's both sides of Main Street, Church Street, both sides, West Village, and the West Village Road is going to be on the east side of West Village, and then courses of Royal Street, Stagecoach Road, and Thomas Arnold. And we have those customers on that particular area that'll be tying onto the system initially. About 130 customers were in the process of finalizing that list as we clean things up at this point. Now, the customer base includes approximately 12 small to mid-sized restaurants, four churches, a craft brewery, a whiterie, a convenience store, a funeral home, and we have several residents. So it's a rather diverse list of customers, at least this initial set. Customer obligations, this I think is probably what a lot of you are here to talk about tonight. And that is, there's a series of steps that you as a property owner will be required to take as you come onto this system. If that line is in front of your property, it is safe to say you're going to be obligated to tap into that system. There may be some situations where that doesn't exist just through engineering or design, but the safest thing, if you're on Main Street and you're on either side of Main Street, you're going to be tying into that system from that standpoint. We are going to be dealing with the property owners from a village standpoint. If you're a merchant who leased from a property owner, we'll be dealing with the property owner in that situation. How they handle you is really between you and them, but our obligation is deal to get the property tied into that system. The properties must connect to the system at the cost of the property owner within 90 days of being notified of the service availability. So here's the way that's going to happen, and that is the fact that as we near that start-up point for the treatment plant, and we have a better idea of a true target date when that plant's going to be ready to up and serve, what we'll do is we'll back a 90-day window out, we'll send letters out to all the customers, and advise you now's your time to get going and get your folks lined up and get the process going. And you'll need to be ready, you know, within that 90-day window to connect to the system. We think that's plenty of time to connect to the system, just to talk with some local plumbers, and also look at the logistics of it. So you'll have 90 days to connect once you're notified about the service availability. You're going to need to use a licensed plumber, and the licensed plumber will come out and do the tap into the system. We will provide that licensed plumber with guidelines, and that licensed plumber will have a plan set actually from us on what's the appropriate way to do the connection to the system. That way, we make sure everything is done in a uniform fashion. And then the other obligation you're going to have is to decommission your existing septic system. And I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding, I think, in some minds about what this actually means. And what this actually means is, it means you're going to be obligated to abandon that system by the state standard. And the state standard is real simple. The state standard says that you basically fill the tank with gravel, and it says you crush the lid. So it's going to be a matter of getting a contractor out there to locate your tank when the time is right, and go in, fill it, and crush it. And that's it. You don't have to go in and pull that tank out. If you don't want to, you don't have to. You know, that's the thing to understand. I think everybody thinks when we talk about abandonment, that means everybody has to go in and pull out that infrastructure out of the ground, and that just simply is not the case. It has to be decommissioned by TCQ standards, and you will be obligated to provide us with a certification that that was properly done. And that will come from your plumber, or your contractor will give the form to them that you will bring into us to say, okay, I'm formally connected, and I formally decommissioned. Turn me on, I'm ready to be served. There are costs, obviously, that come with those obligations, and we're going to talk about those a little bit in detail. The first cost that I want to talk about relates to an impact fee. You've probably heard a little bit about that. We went through a formal study several months ago with a consultant, and it's a statutory process we went through that establishes the cost of an impact fee that all of the folks who connect to the system will be obligated to pay. At the end of the day, the Board of Aldermen reviewed that study, we went through public hearings, and the decision was made to establish an impact fee, basically a TAP fee, if you want to look at it a different way, called by a different name, a TAP fee of $3,750 per LUE. And an LUE is called a living unit equivalent, and that equates to basically 100 gallons a day. And so what will happen is, when the time comes for you to connect to the system, we will notify you that we've analyzed your water usage, and if you're a residential customer, we're going to look at your water usage over a winter period. If you're a commercial customer, we look at it over an annual period. And then we will calculate your impact fee based on that water usage, depending on the type of customer you work. And when we come up with that usage, we will multiply that times the 3,750. The number of LUEs will come up and multiply that times 3,750, and I'll show you how that works in a minute. So you've got an impact fee you're going to be obligated to pay. You're also going to be obligated, as I mentioned, to pay for the plumber. You're going to have to get the plumber out to do that, and that's going to be your cost too. You're going to be obligated to pay for a contractor to decommission, certify your tank's been abandoned. And then the other cost you'll have will be the monthly service fees that will start, obviously, once the service begins. Let's talk a little bit about these fees in more detail. First of all, the impact fee. What is a wastewater impact fee? Like I said, some people refer to it as a TAP fee. A wastewater impact fee is basically a one-time upfront payment that's levied on new or expanded development to help recover the capital cost of the customer's impact on the system. Hence the reason they call it an impact fee. They went through this study to come up with a way to calculate what your impact cost is on the system, and they're going to try to recover that. So why do you do that? There are a couple of reasons why you do that. Number one, you do that to help try to retire the debt and not put all of the debt for the construction of the system on rate or on the taxpayers. It's another way to help share that cost, if you will. The other reason you do it is to help set up a scenario where new development will pay for the extension, for the expansion of the system, for their true impact on the system, and you don't have to pay, for example, for that new subdivision coming in. They would have to pay that coming in upfront, ideally, from that standpoint. The impact fee money that comes in that you will pay and that they will pay when that time comes, that money by law is held separately in a fund, it's accounted for separately, and it can only be spent on certain uses related to construction around that wastewater system. It can be used to fund salaries, police officers, streets. It goes towards the wastewater system. This is a brand-new system. You're a new customer on this system. If you were on the old Stagecoach system, that was a different system. This is a brand-new system, so everybody who was on the old system is going to be considered a new customer. Everybody who is not on the system right now is going to be considered a new customer. It's one of the challenges of a start-up system, and it's the way customers are treated from that standpoint. They're going to be obligated to pay, they're going to be obligated to pay that impact fee, much like the subdivider, two, three, four years down the road is going to have to pay. That impact fee can float. It can change. The board set a maximum, and they can float that fee in between that whenever they choose to do so at this point. They felt like 3,750, when they looked at the report, looked at the study, was a reasonable fee to start off with. What will it be two years from now? Who knows? It's a lot to depend on the development that takes place and what's going on. The impact fee, as I mentioned, 3,750 per living unit equivalent. For most single-family homes, for most residents, that's probably going to be your fee is 3,750. If you're a commercial location where you use more water, that fee is going to go high because it gets multiplied against your water use, as we talked about. So normally, for a single-family home, unless you've got a real water problem, it's going to be typically 1 LUE, which means you're going to be on the hook for 3,750 on that TAP fee. There's four years to pay that out, and I think that's something that I think is important to understand. In a lot of communities, you pay it upfront. As an initial customer on this system, your Board of Aldermen felt like there was a need to try to mitigate the impact. They're recognizing the fact that these are costs. We all recognize the fact that these are costs that we're not used to having to pay, and they're not cheap. Every dollar counts. So they have worked hard to try to develop a customer care package, which I'll talk about in a minute. One of the key elements in that customer care package is the fact that they felt like they needed to give people a chance to pay out that fee. And that's whether you're 1 LUE at 3,750, or whether you're 10 LUEs at $30,000. You'll have four years to pay that off, and that's four years interest-free. If you don't want to pay it off and you want to pay it upfront, that's fine. If you want to pay it off in two years, that's fine. But what will happen is, we'll set up an agreement with you, and you basically will declare how you want to pay that fee, and then you'll get that into the system and start making those payments. That's step one in the customer care package. We'll talk more detail about that. I want to talk a little bit more detail as far as this capital impact fee, this wastewater impact fee, so you know exactly how it works. This kind of defines it for you, maybe, hopefully gives you a better feel for it. If you're a single-family residence, and you're estimated to use 19,800 gallons of water during winter months, and we classify winter months as November through February, which basically is a four-month period, okay? So what we'll do is, when you come in to sign up, we'll pull your water bill up, we'll look at your water usage from November through February, then we'll divide that out and come up with a daily water use, an average daily water use. And that will determine how many LUEs are assigned to your property, living unit equivalents, and then we multiply that number times the 3,750. So if you're a 19,800 gallon customer, it says basically, when you break it out, it's 1.7 LUEs, because it works out to about 165 gallons a day. The 1.7 LUEs multiply that times 3,750, and this particular single-family customer, which uses a lot of water, $6,375 would be their, that would be their impact fee. And they have four years to pay that out. An example of a commercial calculation. If you had a business that used 100,000 gallons, keep in mind, on the business side, we calculated over a year. On the residential side, we calculated over the winter months. The reason why, just to help point this out, is the winter months, we're trying to isolate, in the study as well as when we do our rates, we're trying to isolate really truly how much wastewater you're using. There really is not a true accurate meter you can slap on a wastewater system that'll actually gauge your wastewater. Some people will tell you there is, but at the end of the day, you know, this is the best way, and this is the standard, the way people typically do these things. The idea is you're less likely to water your yard in the winter. So you isolate your water usage during the winter with the understanding that most all of your water is probably going down the sink and not into the ground. And hence, you're able to get a better feel for truly how much water you're putting into the wastewater system. In the case of a commercial business, you have to look at the annual, the annual use, because they're a totally different animal. They're functioning 365 sometimes, and not a lot of irrigation going on in that world as much as it's more correct use, cooking, toilets, those type of things. So in the case of the commercial customer, if they use, say, 100,000 gallons, when you look at the estimated annual use, and you break out the LUEs based on that through the division process, they come up at 2.7 LUEs, and you multiply that times 3,750, and it comes up with an impact fee for this commercial customer of $10,125. You're going to be obligated to pay wastewater fees, monthly sewer bills, once the system comes online. We have done the initial work on a rate study, and we will finalize that rate study in January, okay? Why do you wait until January? We wait until January because we will have a more firm feel of what the final cost of the system is really going to be. If we were to set the rates today, and for some reason, God forbid, there was some type of bust in the budget, we're going to have to try to recover that money, and the feeling is, we're going to set rates, they really truly do need to be a true cost of service. The other reason is, we won't have a contractor in place to run the plant until after the first of the year. It'd make no sense to get them on board too early. So we'll have a good feel for what their costs are going to be in January, too, for operating that, and all of those numbers go into the rates and allow us to more fairly calculated cost of service rate with the levy on the customer for the service. Every customer's bill will have two parts. Part one is going to be a base amount, a base fee. Every customer is going to play the same, every commercial customer in their class will pay the same base fee, every residential customer in their class will pay the same base fee. There'll be a different base for a commercial and a different base for residential, but all of the customers in their classes will have that same base, okay? Where things start to change, at least this is what we're looking at right now, is going to be on the volumetric end of things. And the volumetric means trying to place a cost on how much wastewater you're actually putting into that system, okay? So a base fee, and then a volumetric fee. The volumetric fee for residential customers is going to be calculated on the winter average water use, just like we did the impact fee, okay? So we'll look at your winter use, and we'll determine an average use, and we'll apply that towards whatever that volumetric rate the board decides to set. On the commercial side, there will also be a volumetric fee. It will be broken, though, into two different classes, okay? There's going to be a high-impact class and a low-impact class. It doesn't necessarily, on the commercial side, reflect how much water you use. As much, as far as the breakout in the class, it's going to impact, what's going to determine what commercial class you fall into is going to be the strength of your wastewater. In other words, how dirty is your wastewater? And if you really think about it, it makes sense, because if you have a commercial business that's a high producer of some strong wastewater, should they not be paying a little bit more because there's more of a cost to process that than, say, the mom-and-pop dress shop? So we try to create a customer class difference in the commercial end, low-impact and high-impact. Both of those customers will have volumetric fees, their volumetric fees will be calculated instead of on winter average, they'll be calculated on annual water use, just like we talked about on the impact. Two components, base fee, and then the volumetric fee. How those are calculated depends on what type of customer you are, okay? The thing to keep in mind about the rates is, they will be fixed for a period of year. We had an opportunity in the rate study to look at whatever cost, if we were to go month to month, literally, translation, we were to pull your water records every month and recalculate your bill every month. Number one, from a financial projection standpoint, that doesn't make a lot of sense, because water use fluctuates, and it's difficult to pin that down. But number two, from a customer care standpoint, we felt it was more reasonable if you knew at the beginning of the year how much you were going to be paying for the next 12 months. And so that's the way it's going to be. We'll go back in and recalculate the bills, you know, every 12 months, and adjust the bills if there's a need to adjust, you know, every 12 months. They're not going to be fluctuating, they're not going to be floating from that standpoint. I've referenced the customer care package a couple of times. Let's talk a little detail as far as that goes. We mentioned, first of all, one of the key elements of the customer care package, which is intended to kind of help the customer out and help deal with that burden that they're being faced with. You'll have four years to pay off the impact fees, and that is interest-free, four years. We've worked out an arrangement with the Health District. They were pretty adamant in the beginning that, once you connected to the wastewater system, you needed to decommission immediately and show that being that of it. And while I understand that, and while we understand that from a village standpoint, our contention to them was that really it was not fair on the customer who's having to pay an impact fee and having to pay for a plumber upfront, and we asked for their alternatives that were available. We talked to them about whether there was a possibility of potentially using that old septic system as a backup in the event the system failed. And the way we read the law, actually, the way somebody from TCQ read the law, there was a possibility that that could be done. But at the end of the day, the ultimate authority is the Health District. They're what's called our designated representative, and we have to hear their final determination. Their comment was, no, we're not going to allow them to use it as a backup, we're not going to allow them to use it to store rainwater, it needs to get decommissioned. We talked to them about our concern about the financial impact, and what they came back with, which I think was a pretty fair agreement, was they said they would give folks 12 months, once you're connected to the city sewer system, they would give folks 12 months to come in and certify the septic as being decommissioned. So you're not going to have to do that right away. You're going to have to do that over the 12 months. That doesn't mean you continue to use your septic, because your plumber's going to disconnect you from the septic. It just means you're not going to have to go out and hide that contractor immediately and decommission him unless you want to. Again, that choice is yours, but there's a window of opportunity for you that you didn't have before. There are several customers on the system that are going to have what are called grinder pumps. And grinder pumps are exactly what they sound like. It's basically a pump system that's installed in the ground, that's intended to grind your waste and push it to the sewer main. And you typically have those when you're in a difficult topography, where it doesn't flow gravity, and so it forces it to the mains, where it can be taken to the treatment plant. So folks who are on this particular leg are typically the people over on the east side of Main Street, okay? And there are probably about 30, maybe 38 customers, I think, fall into that category that are going to have to have grinder pumps. You will have an obligation to have your plumber or whoever install that grinder pump. So the question is, are you going to make me put the grinder, or are you making me go buy the grinder pump also? The board talked about that, and it didn't take long to make the decision that they felt like the village needed to pick up the cost of the grinder pumps to at least help along those lines. And that's about a $4,000 nut for grinder pump that they're going to be picking up. But they felt like they could do that and needed to do that for the customers. They're a special situation. They're not like a typical customer on the system that they're going to use for a burden. And so they wanted to help out. So we're going to be buying the grinder pumps for those individuals, and what we will do is, we will provide that grinder pump to the property owner, and that property owner will use a certified plumber who has gone through training on installation of that particular grinder pump to install the grinder pump on your property. We're not paying for the installation, you will be paying for the installation. But we felt like it was good to meet you halfway and at least get you the grinder pump and give you that. Those grinder pumps have a five-year warranty for parts and labor. We bought the same type of grinder pump, and it's an upper-end grinder pump. But we did so because we wanted something that was reliable and something that hopefully you weren't going to have to mess with over the first few years of the system. So that will be happening, and we'll be going through a training program with plumbers to make sure the plumbers, those who want to install the grinder pumps, are actually certified to install this particular type of grinder pump. I think it'll be a real plus for the customers who are facing the grinder pump issue itself. And then the last item in that customer care package is one we're working in the direction of. And what I can tell you is, if the money is available at the end of this project, we're hopeful it will be, and right now, like I said, we're running under budget as far as the construction fees. But if there's money available at the end of the project, one of the things we're interested in trying to see is maybe offering some type of rebate, to the point that when you come in and certify that you're decommissioned on your septic side, you're connected either through your grinder pump or somewhere else, that we would issue a rebate check of some amount to that particular customer to help offset some of the cost. It's not going to cover all your costs, trust me, but a little bit goes back to you. Hopefully, that will help you and help lessen that burden on you. I can't guarantee you that program right now, but I want to tell you that that is being discussed, and there's interest among the board from the discussions they've had with staff about trying to offer that, if we can possibly offer that. How much will be involved, again, is really going to depend on truly how much money we have left at the end of the project. As we near the end of that, we're going to have a better idea, and we'll be able to tell you more about that. So that's the customer care package. So the question is, where do we go from here? We're sitting now December 19th, a few days away from Christmas. We will be working through Christmas and all the way through the end of March to try to get this system up and going. That is our target date, is to try to get this system going in early March. We have letters we'll be sending out to certain commercial customers advising them of our treatment standards for their waste. Again, they're unique customers from that standpoint. We're going to be going in and trying to finalize the rates, and we'll be bringing those to the board hopefully at the end of January, so we can begin to get that going. We're going to have a second informational meeting, and if we have to have a third, we'll have a third. That's going to take place more than likely in late January, as we get a better idea, a better snapshot of where we're going to end this project financially. We will be completing construction of the treatment plant in late January, early February, as we talked about. The grinder pump installation training for the plumbers will take place in February. Notification of service availability, we think we'll be able to start sending those letters out if all goes as planned sometime in late February. And again, once you get your letter, there's a 90-day window that you're going to need to strive to meet from that standpoint. Something to understand about this 90-day window, something to understand about this four-year payout that I didn't touch on, and I think it's probably important to touch on. That four-year payout is being offered to you, the initial customer. That 90-day window is being offered to you, the initial customer. That 12-month leeway to decommission your septic is being offered to you, the original That twelve-month leeway to decommission your septic is being offered to you, the original customer. If somebody comes in after the fact, even if it's a day or two after the fact, they have to connect when they pay, they don't get the benefit of the doubt as far as the decommissioning goes, no incentive package. Translation, they, the board is trying to develop some benefits for the initial customers to recognize the burden you as the initial customer face. After that initial customer basis onboard, after that, everybody is a regular user, a regular customer and doesn't get some of the benefits. So that's something to think about. Grinder pump installation training, as I mentioned, in February, notification of service availability and we hope to initiate service in early March 2019. Let me talk to you real quickly for a moment before I open it up and take a few questions. Let me talk to you for a moment about where we stand in the way of expansion. You may have heard or read a little bit, I think Tim's probably written some things in the paper about it. This project is evolving. Our goal, obviously, primary goal and mission is to get the initial customer area finished, connected and serviced, okay? But it's irresponsible on our part to not be thinking about bringing other customers into the plant to help offset some of the cost and offset the burden on all of the customers, including you as the initial customer. The more customers you have on the system, ideally your rates should come down because there's less of a burden for each customer to pay. So we benefit by getting more on that system. There is a capacity for that system, so we've gotta manage that capacity. But we're in the process of already talking to folks about expansion of this system. We're in the middle of an annexation process, in the preliminary stages of the annexation process for the school district properties. The school district wants to bring all of their properties into the village. So we're gonna be annexing Salado School Road and putting a sewer main down Salado School Road. We're gonna be annexing Williams Road all the way to 2484 and putting a sewer line down the side of Williams Road to serve the high school as well as the new school that's gonna be built. And then we'll be serving all the school properties on Salado School Road. You have to be in the village to get the service, so they have to annex. So that's exactly what's going on from the process. We're not, if the rumors out there on the street, we're not forcing people to come into the village, we don't have that legal authority to do that. So translation, there may be a sewer line across the street from a house on Salado School Road. But as far as our maps are concerned, that property is out in the ETJ and that property will not be served until that property owner comes to the village and says, I wanna be part of it, I wanna come into the city, I wanna be annexed. So we're not forcing it on them, but we're trying to plan accordingly and move in that direction. From a standpoint of other potential expansions, there will be an extension of the sewer line down Royal Street, past the Shelton property, down to a new subdivision that's coming in. Shelton property will tie in and that new subdivision will tie in. We're in discussions right now about the idea of extending it to Brooks Brothers and Salado Plaza. We've had discussions with a couple of different subdivisions out on the Holland Highway and also out off of Williams Road about coming onto the system. So we're moving in that direction. Our thought process is we recognize the fact that the more people we get on the system, the less burden it's gonna be from a rate standpoint. Keep in mind all of those expansions, the school district is paying the cost of that construction to extend the line, not you. Well, you are, we are, we're all taxpayers of the school district. But from a standpoint of the city, through our tax rate, no. For a subdivision coming in, we're not paying that cost. They're gonna be obligated to cover that cost of the expansion. Not you, not me. That's the fair thing to do. Lessens the burden on us, it causes development to pay for itself. Will that kill development? No, it won't kill development. Believe me, it won't kill development. Developers recognize that cost in their financial model and they deal with it accordingly. So there is a push, there is a move and there will continue to be a push and a move as long as the capacity exists to bring more customers onto the system to lessen the burden from our perspective. Are we gonna be able to serve everybody at that new plant? No. That plant has a capacity, it has right now a permitted capacity of up to 300,000 and the initial capacity is 200, then it goes to 300. The growth in this town in large part in the next five to 10 years is out west. It doesn't make a lot of sense to pump all of that waste from the west side all the way across town and go up the hill to that plant. So we envision really at this point that plant being the primary service area is gonna be this side of the interstate and then look at some type of other facility potentially in the future on the west side to deal with some of that growth. So we're not pumping everything across the interstate. So that's kind of the layout of where we are. We're shooting for an early March startup. You got an idea about, general idea about what some of the costs you're looking at right now? I can tell you, I wish I could stand here right now and tell you what the cost is gonna be or what an estimated cost would be to plum your place, but it depends on every property, okay? It depends on where your septic's located as far as what the cost is gonna be to get that decommissioned. The one thing I would tell you as a customer, and I would just say this right now with our first meeting, is call multiple contractors. Unless you know and are totally comfortable with the contractor you wanna use, I would strongly encourage you to price shop to make sure that you're not getting taken advantage of and to make sure that you get the best possible deal with the person that you're comfortable with and the person that you're willing to put on your property and do this type of work. There will be an inspection process that we will follow when the connection's made, we'll go out and actually do the inspection. When the decommission's made, we'll simply require a certification from the contractor showing us the decommission. The health district will probably come out and actually do a site visit from that perspective than not the village per se. So that's kind of the one-on-ones where we are right now. So I promised you an hour, so we've got some time for a few questions, so let me see what I can do to help. Yes, sir.
Well, just three months, how many plumbers are you gonna have certified?
As many as want, first of all, on the grinder pumps?
No. You said we have 138, like, due to production?
About 130. Then any plumber can come in and do the tap.
The question is, are we certifi-
We're not certifying the plumbers to do the tap, we're only certifying the plumbers who are gonna do the grinder pumps. So you can use a plumber, if you wanna use a plumber out of South Austin, if you wanna use a plumber out of Waco, they're just gonna need to do it to our standard, to our guidelines and then that will be okay. So if it's a grinder pump installer and we're gonna send notices out for that training to plumbers throughout this area, not just in Salado, because we recognize the fact that you've got 130 properties that are gonna get connected and there's gonna be some backup if we don't try to encourage as much use as possible. Yes, sir.
I think the state mandates training for plumbers, are you sure that's legal to require training for plumbers who the state already handles that? I think there's some kind of law about that?
No, we're not training plumbers to how to plumb, we're training them on how to install that particular unit and so yes, that is legal. It's done in several communities. Yes, sir.
What is a typical timeline post, say residential conversion? We'd go through the litany of things you would ask us to do, but then let's say plumbing doesn't coincide with the septic system decommissioned, meanwhile your front yard's torn up and all the parts are out there, how do I get water?
Well, what you'll do is, what more than likely is gonna happen is this, your plumber's gonna come out and he's gonna tie off, he's gonna break off from their septic system and he'll tap the property from that standpoint. And then you would come in and subsequently decommission the septic system. So typically the connection comes first, the decommissioning comes second. The timing of that decommission is what we talked about, you've got 12 months to do that. If you wanna do it all at one time and you've got contractors that will do it all at one time?
Who are the contractors? Because it's hard for me to get persons to do anything all at once.
You're right. We are going to, one of the things that we're gonna try to do to help is we're gonna try to publish a list of local contractors in this area. We're not gonna verify or validate them, but we're gonna give a list of contractors and call around.
And how about plumbers doing, because my plumber doesn't wanna do it.
Same thing. And one of the things that we've talked about is, we've actually talked about the idea of putting out, and we still have plenty of time to do it, we've talked about the idea of putting out, for lack of a better phrase, a bid packet to come up with a preferred contractor list where maybe they guarantee a certain price through that process. We're not gonna tell you you're gonna use.
No, but at least it would give us satisfaction. Anytime you're trying to do something around here, it's hard to get contractors to come to Salado.
Yes, ma'am, very much so. I hear you. We will, that's the game plan, so I think we're thinking along the same line. Tim?
Will you waive the contractor registration for that period?
That decision hasn't been made, but that's an idea that certainly the board would be willing to look at and talk to.
That's the reason a lot of contractors won't do work in Salado.
Yes, sir.
I have a property with villagers that's not being lived in.
Yes, sir.
And it has a well and a septic, how are you gonna do the water fee when there's no water?
Those will be handled on a case-by-case basis.
They haven't been lived in in years.
Those will be handled on a case-by-case basis and help to work through that. More than likely it'll be based on the classified use of the property, so if it's a single-family house, it would be one of you. Yes, sir.
You make the assumption that once we, once this system is up and running, it's a hundred percent effective. But what if it didn't? What if it goes down? What if, what if failures occur? What are you gonna do for us who are sitting here needing that service and we can't get it?
The system has been designed and it's been engineered and it's been reviewed by the state and it should function accordingly. Systems fail, no system is fail-proof. There are stopgaps in the system, all of your lift stations will contain power pumps as a backup and then if the lift stations go down, there's also backup power that exists up on the treatment plant side and there's enough capacity to deal with that. All of the lift stations, for example, are required to meet a state standard, they're supposed to have 24-hour capacity in the event power goes down, so the lift station still at least can collect the waste and you're not stuck not being able to flush your toilet. So there are some safeguards in the system, they'll deal with that. Line breaks, you deal with the line breaks and you try to, that's why we're gonna have a contractor that'll move quickly and deal with any type of line breaks that may take place. So the system will be manned and it'll be serviced 365 days a year, seven days a week, 24/7 if there are events of problems. It's gonna be monitored with the SCADA system, it'll be monitored with also human maintenance. So I think we've got pretty much all the safeguards that a typical system would have, probably a little bit more quite frankly. The system will be monitored a little bit more than your typical wastewater system and the reason why is because we're in an environmentally sensitive area. And so as such, we've made some commitments and obligations to fish the wildlife to maybe look at the lines a little bit closer and run cameras on lines a little bit more frequently than others. Yes, sir.
Um, yeah. The contract that we have with Sanctuary and with the stage coach included some tax abatement, I have a couple of questions, and tax abatement for them. And I just wondered if that's going to be considered at all as a help for all of us who are gonna have these additional costs? I mean, we're not new development, but we, but these are costs that we are going to incur. So is there any thought to giving us tax abatement such as given to Mr. Pancks and to the stage coach developments? And also, are there, is there any thought, I know we've talked about sewer reservations for, and how will that work, reservation for a city?
Well, the, the, let me, let me answer the first question. There's not been any discussion about tax abatements from a standpoint of going beyond whatever was given to Sanctuary or whatever's been set aside from the stage coach standpoint. Is that, is that gonna come up at some point in the future? I don't know and I certainly am not in a position to say it will or advocate it or not advocate, that's a board decision that they would have to take up. From a standpoint of, from the standpoint of that, those tax abatements were given in conjunction with the development and not necessarily related to their wastewater. There are other provisions, for example, in the Sanctuary agreement relating to wastewater mandates, which we've talked about as far as the fact that we're obligated to provide service to them if they request that. Tax abatement is a different beast, a different animal and that's, there's been no discussion at this point. From a reservation standpoint, when developers come in, developers will have, new developers will have the ability to come in and basically reserve capacity through a process that the board has set up. And there's a time limit on how long they can sit on that capacity. And that's all gonna be part of this management game. If you can imagine, you know, when the city has been given a bucket and we know the bucket holds this much water and so we're gonna manage what's coming into that bucket to the point that we know we don't overflow that bucket. So there'll be a process that we'll continue monitoring, capacity, we're gonna monitor the existing customer's capacity. We have assumptions on how much the existing customers are gonna be putting into that system at the beginning. It may be a high number, it may be a low number, until we get everybody onboard, we're not gonna know for sure. I think it's safe to say it's probably a lower number because once people have the ability to, to, you know, free flow and do more things that they're kind of restricted to now because of septic limitations and things like that, there's the possibility that number could go up. But reservation wise, there's a process for new development to come in and reserve that and we simply manage that as a village. Yes, sir.
Um, grinders, is there a process by which we have to apply or you make the determination?
We've identified the customers at this stage of the game who are on grinder and they, like as I mentioned before, in large part it's just the people on Main Street at this stage of the game, it's the people on the other side, the east side of Main Street. And the reason why is the topography falls down in that area and a lot of those properties are part of our off-the-road, so there's a need to do that as opposed to somebody who's riding from. There may be another customer too as we get through the connection process and start looking at it where we may make a determination that they may need it, but we'll work through those issues that we get through. Yes, ma'am.
Don, the slide before this one that says questions. The first bullet, it says establish monthly service fees once the cost of the project is known. Is a service fee the same as a base fee?
The service fee has two components, that's your monthly bill. Your service fee is gonna have a component that's a base fee and then it's gonna have the volumetric component, so that's what we're talking about.
So you won't be able to come up with a base fee until you get all the figures in?
We're pulling, so you know, we're going back and pulling additional water usage numbers. We will, at our next meeting, which is our hope in January, in our next meeting, we're gonna have a database put together that you will be able to walk up and say, my address is this, 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 and we can punch it up and we'll have some sample great scenarios for you that'll give you an idea of what your monthly rates might be. Until they're finalized, I can't tell you, but it'll give you an idea of what you're looking at as far as your services. We can do the same calculation for you on your impact fees, so that gives you a little bit of planning. Yes, sir, in the back.
How deep are these lines gonna be on the property? The reason I'm asking is because on one of my properties, I've got electrical line running across the property.
They'll have to get mitigated somehow, we'll have to figure that out. And there are separations that the plumbers are obligated to follow from a standpoint of proximity to water and also to electrical. Whereabouts are you on, whereabouts are you?
I'm at six, the one I'm talking about, 601 West Village Road.
Okay.
My septic tank is on the south side of the house and my electrical line is on the south side of the house and runs across the property. And where you put the line for the sewer, it's right across by the light pole.
Oh, oh.
It's coming, it's gonna have to come across somehow another.
Get with me, do me a favor, when you get out of here, get with me and I'll get with our engineers and maybe we can go a site visit and try to see if we can provide you some help on that.
Yeah, if I can figure, you know, how deep it's gonna be compared to, I don't know exactly how deep to put the lines.
Well, we can give you, it varies depending on where you are, we can give you a good idea as far as what it is so you can let your plumber know so he can know how to. Yes, ma'am.
Um, can you be a little bit more specific about the commercial base fee and the dirtier water company and, you know, what, how's that determined?
It's, it's gonna be determined, we have certain limits, what are called void limits and those type of things that get placed on commercial waste. And states, the state has standards that we try to live by, we have the permit that we have to live by. And so we have certain treatment parameters that are in that plant and we have certain limits on what can come into that plant in order to meet those treatments. And so depending on the type of business you have, your waste could be producing stronger waste than other people. A dress shop, for example, with a single toilet is not gonna produce the same thing a restaurant could produce, you know, or, you know, some other types of business that's a high waste. So that's, that's kind of what we're talking about, a lot of it depends on what's in your waste stream, what you're producing and how voluminous you are in your production. The smaller guys obviously are gonna be probably less impacted than the bigger guys. Yes, sir.
The same thing that's said for anybody that accuses to go online and are we gonna be penalized because of the, you know, those people not going online, paying their fair share of all the...
Yeah, there is a system, there is, the ordinance that was adopted for the impact fees and the connection requirement, there's a mandatory connection ordinance that's in place. And the way that ordinance reads is it reads that once you're given notice and if you fail to respond within a certain time of that notice, the city will go in and connect it and then go turn around on the property and place a lane to recover the cost for that connection or someone to make it. So yes, there's, your point's well taken and that is if you're gonna go to the money, everybody else is gonna go to the money. You shouldn't be bearing their freight. Yes, sir. Greg?
I'm talking about the existing customers, you said you're gonna push the reset button and they're gonna expect to pay impact fees also, is that what you're saying now?
No.
And is that what you said in... And is that what you said in the summertime?
No, no. What I said in the summertime, and what I'll say now is the fact that they're going to be required to connect to the system and that they will be treated like a new customer on the system, just like everybody else will. In the case of existing customers, there, there will probably be some type of grace afforded from a standpoint of, uh, portion of that impact. But again, that's, you're going to be treated just like the regular customers though, from a standpoint of being required to connect and, and within the timeframe to connect and paying fees like those for, for our service fees. What other questions?
One more. At the, the thirty-seven, what was it, thirty-seven fifty?
Yes, sir.
So you already got to figure it out, how much it's going to be a month for the four years, right?
Uh, yes, sir. But you can figure it out. And again, it's what you want to do. It'll be your choice. You may want to pay, Grayton may want to pay half this impact fee in year one and pay the rest out over the next three.
The thing of it is, I've got two properties.
Yep.
So I'm going to get hit twice.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, are they both going to be, do the same date?
They will be, when, when, from a standpoint of that, you will be entered into an agreement with the village if you're going to pay it out.
Yeah.
So it's all when you want to time it. Yes, sir?
What will you do with impact fees on change of use on properties? Because for a lot of the properties over on West Village Road, for example, right now are residential properties. But once sewage is, uh, available to them, those are trying to become commercial properties and be, to be redeveloped. So if a property is redeveloped and the owner paid the one-time living unit equivalent, and then his property becomes a, uh, high-usage restaurant, will the new user pay?
No, you can't charge a double impact fee. The impact fee is assessed at the time that the property's connected to the system. So if it changes, it changes. Where they get hit is they get hit at rates because they're going to be paying a commercial rate, which is going to be significantly higher than the residential rate. What other questions? Grayton, I can get with you if it would be helpful and give you a perception on y'all's cost that we can come up with, because that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Cool, great. It's a, it's one of those situations, folks, that I know is going to be difficult for all of us, and I am impressed for all of us. But we'll get through it. What happens if everybody doesn't get connected within the ninety-day window? I think we can get everybody connected within the ninety-day window.
Do you really believe you could get a hundred and thirty-eight properties in nine days? This place would be looking like a war zone. Oh, it's, it's nothing compared to what, look at how many backos and frenchers and pipe. I really think you guys need to think about what happens.
I think at this stage of the game, you have to, you have to set a window, and I think that's what the board's done. And I think we're, we're going to move in that direction, and I think it's, I think it's accomplishable. And if it's not, that's an issue the board will deal with if and when that type of comes. So I think you have a window, and the window, window, window is pretty reasonable if you start moving on it and you don't wait until the last minute, especially with the idea that you're not having to decommission at twelve months. Yes, sir?
I, I go along with what he's saying. I agree. The, the commercial is a higher-dollar plumber contracting fee.
Sure.
So this residential guy is, we're going to have a hard time finding a contractor because they're going to be busy doing all the commercial businesses. And it's going to be day fifty-five, and we have one plumber calling back, you know, with.
One of the reasons we're having the discussions at this stage of the game is to get you thinking about it, uh, from a standpoint of talking. We will have standards that we'll be able to pass out, uh, in January to you all from a standpoint of giving them to your plumber and letting them start to look at it. Again, the word is going to be out. My hunch is there, there will be a few plumbers in this town that are not Salado plumbers, just because there's going to be business in town. We're not trying to hurt the Salado plumbers, but there's a demand for business, yes, sir?
Why not have phases, like this month have this block go online, and then you gradually go up the angle? You know, and then you have timeframes for different, and then you're not rushing all the plumbers to jack their prices.
I think, and I think that we've set a window, and I think as we begin to see the progress made on that, I think that'll be a decision if, if there's a need for a decision to be made. But at this stage of the game, we think ninety days is a discouraging.
I like that.
Don't matter.
It's going to be hard to get people to do this all the time. I mean, they've just gone shut up.
Plumbers already have jobs. They're not waiting for us to do this. They've got, they've got a deadline now already.
Anytime you want to stress people out, you put them on a time frame. That's why there's drama, the documentaries and stuff, they put them under a time frame for a project is to cause drama and stress. Leave out the drama. Let's go ahead and have little phases and slowly progress in.
In a neutral, in a neutral environment, I think you're right. The challenge you've got is it's a growing community, and, and the issue is we're trying to get the customer base online as fast as possible so they get online and don't get pushed out by maybe some additional growth, and they come in at some later. So that's the way to look at it. What other questions? Thank you all very much. Uh, we appreciate it, and, uh, we hope you have a good Christmas. And, uh, we will be getting hold of you, uh, in, in January, next year.